Looking at the zoning.
Yeah, I know what you're saying. The zoning was just where that site was.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mark it.
Marked it, I thought we had a second.
Marking point.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. City of Kingston, ICCHV. Rob, are you going to do them together?
Yeah.
I think we're going to discuss that.
Okay. Are there any recusals?
I'm recusing myself.
Okay.
Because I'm a professional consultant to the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other recusals? Okay. Go ahead, Rob.
Sure.
First, do you recommend doing the reviews, the two referrals together as one, or do you want to separate things? Do them together?
I don't see why not.
Okay.
Is this accurate, a special permit?
I mean, that's what the city checkmarks to that. Whether it's an administrative issue from the city that they checkmarked.
The city sent it to us as a special permit, so we had to review it.
They sent it to us as both, as both a site plan and a special permit. So I know that the applicant's attorney had indicated it's only site plan review. From that perspective, I think, from the recommendations perspective, I don't think it makes a lot of difference, but we do have it from both, from both from a special permit side and from a, and from a site plan review side as indicated by the city in their submittal.
Okay. Rob, go ahead.
All right. This is a proposal for a, where do we size that now? 16,213 square foot structure. It's located at, on Beale Street, this location, off Dock Street and Beale Street. And let's go through the floor plan and site plan. So it's easier to go through all different uses of that. That's the proposed facade structure. They're actually going to, proposing to go down a bit for the, this, the first floor is going to be the theater, the interior. And let's go up, actually.
Got the previous slide?
Let's go to the next one. This is the first floor. This is the site plan here. 18 parking spaces are proposed. Fixing up the retention wall here. No proposed changes actually to the blue stone, the company path to that location. See, they have the access from here and from door here. First floor is scheduled to be, there's a test kitchen here is what they're proposing here, a gift shop, and this is like a tea room is what they're calling it, and a bar area on the first floor.
What was on the site before?
Nothing.
Well, the original was two houses.
And they burned. So the site's vacant now.
This is currently a vacant site.
So what you're calling the first floor is actually like the base level?
That's actually the second floor. That's the first floor on Beale Street.
First floor on Beale.
Right. That's the entrance from Beale Street. So it would be the second floor technically.
Let's call it ground floor, first floor.
Ground floor, first floor. Next slide. This is the basement or the first floor as if you're approaching it from Dock Street. This is 171 seat theater at this location, and a deck out here. Next slide.
Is that fixed seating?
Yes. And that's the loft. Next slide. This is just some elevation. This is the eastern elevation.
So the theater's where?
Theater would be in here.
Why don't you run through the floors, Rob?
Okay.
Theater on, they're just right wired there, right now.
Sure. Theater. This is your bar, kind of tea room area. And this is classroom space and also a multipurpose space.
And there's the roof.
And there's also a green roof that actually has outdoor seating on it too. The elevator, there's an elevator shaft. The elevator goes all the way up to the roof.
So two stories on Beale, three stories on Dock.
Right.
Effectively, not necessarily under the zoning, but effectively, yes.
Rob, are they removing all the, all the ground there that is shown from existing?
There is going to be some grading with respect to it.
You got a lot of grading.
Is there excavation required? Do they get that data in?
Yeah.
Yes. In order to get down to that grade, yes.
Excellent.
Yes, please.
So why don't we, if I may, why don't we back up, Rob?
Sure.
And why don't you back up to the start and I'll see if I can, I wanted to, Rob, you can back. We know the location, so we don't have to go to the location. Anybody have any confusion about where we are?
Yeah.
Can we zoom in on this?
Let me, you've got your, yeah, let me see that. Sorry, thank you. So this is where we are. This is, this is a waterfront right here. This is the Rondell Creek. All right, this is Beale Street, and I know I'm going to get names wrong. This is Dock Street. I continually get these names wrong. This is a particular site right, right here.
Yes.
These are existing historic structures right here. The RT District is this whole area through here. You heard some mention of the West Strand area. The West Strand area is, is considered this whole area here. Also heard some mention, quite frankly, to a decision from the zoning board of appeals in the city of Kingston. It was an interpretation. That interpretation effectively has indicated that the cultural center as discussed is a permitted use in the, on the location. And that it was, there was some question about that relative to its frontage on Dock Street or within the, within the, within the West Strand area. That question has been answered, from what we can understand, it's been answered by the zoning board of appeals in the affirmative that, that the use is proposed is permitted. If you do the next, I'm going to try to run through this. A couple of things. One, this is, you heard some reference to Company Hill Path. This is Company Hill Path. It's not owned by the applicant, but it is a major thoroughfare for pedestrians up and down between Beale Street and Dock Street. This is the wall that we're, that you heard, Rob, talked about. This is a blue stone wall. There is a proposal, as we understand it, to do some reconstruction of this wall, a repair of this wall. There is no proposal to change any of the existing surfaces on Dock Street. You heard some mention of the fact that it's controlled by the city and not the applicant. If you look at this, right in this area here, there is an access point that would allow you to access the cultural center, and then there's a slight upgrade with a doorway in through here. Looking at this, you can see a substantial amount of glass penetration in here. You can see that these are an open deck, and again, glass storefronts up through here. Carried over in this, in this area through here with the two circular windows that you'll see in the architectural elevations. And finally, the roof itself and the outside of the roof, as we understand it, is now proposed to be, these areas are now proposed to be vertical.
Solar.
Thank you. Vertical solar panels. That was a brain freeze. A couple of things that, you start to hear some of the discussion from the letter that we've seen from the state historic preservation officer. There's apparently another letter. We don't have a copy of that letter in our files. Is the difference in the architectural, in the architectural styles associated with these buildings and the architectural style associated with those buildings? There's some of the next door neighbor houses, and we'll, we'll have a conversation about that in terms of proximity of that house as we move to the site plan. I would say that the city spent, one of the things that ended up happening, the city spent a lot of effort doing historic preservation on these structures down here. There's some of the original structures that were saved by efforts of the city in the past from urban renewal to save these historic buildings. These are on, my understanding is that these, these buildings are on the historic register. So with all of that, just understand, one of the things that is of some concern that, from shippo that we heard, was sort of the quote industrial appearance of the building as it, as it currently, as it was currently then designed. And looking at this, there's a substantial amount of glass, what I would call storefronts, that are, that exist in these, in these areas here. There's a great deal of discussion within the application about how the applicant got here in terms of even the detail, down to the detail on some of the fencing, excuse me, the railings here using a particular symbol, an Irish symbol in terms of built into, built into the railing itself. Next slide. This is the, this is the site plan as, as looking at the first floor from Beale Street. This is Beale Street right here. And I'm probably going to run out of battery. This is the 18 spaces that we're talking about. That's the discussion with respect to the parking area. A couple of things with regard to parking. One is, is that the parking calculations for cultural centers are different from parking calculations from the uses permitted in the building itself. So the city has its own particular parking standards for, for cultural centers, and it's a division of total square footage to arrive at the number of spaces needed. And if I cite wrong numbers here, we'll correct them in our, in our responses. But I believe it's 54 spaces are required, Robert. There's 18 provided. Originally, there were spaces provided across the road. There's some concern with respect to spaces across the road as to whether or not those spaces were permitted as a principal use. To our understanding from conversations with the city, that there may be some movement to amend the city code to allow that to occur. But as it stands now, we have 18 spaces out of required 54. My understanding that the applicant will request a waiver from those, from those spaces. And in looking at the waiver request, is predicated on, allowed within the zoning statute, and predicated on finding parking elsewhere. Not the least of which is the parking that's available down on the strand itself by Dock Street, the public parking spaces there. Waivers have been granted in the past for buildings in the waterfront area and other areas within the city. The, I think the key issue here is, is they have not generally been granted for new structures. So they've been granted for older structures, sort of like a reoccupancy waiver, recognizing the fact that there was little that the applicant could do, but they have not generally been granted for new structures with regard to this.
Dennis, do you want questions then, or you want to wait till?
Sure, I'll take questions. No problem.
Discussion of a remote parking facility?
Say that one more time.
Discussion about a remote parking facility, maybe to take some of these patrons?
Not a lot of room on this site to put?
Not on the site, but off-site, maybe shuttle?
Well, the real question is, is, the question in my mind is, A, do you calculate parking for the facility on the basis of what's contemplated in the zoning statute, which is 54 spaces? Or do you start to have a discussion about what the overall parking demand is for a facility of this, and then start to think about how that parking demand can be met, whether it's met off-site or not? The difficulty that you're having is, is that no matter where you put it off-site, if this is public parking down here and it's not restricted, it's going to be first come, first served. A, and then as you move out into this area, has anybody's been down there for the special events that are down there? There's a pretty much unrestricted parking within residential neighborhoods and the commercial streets up and down this area. And one would suspect that what you're going to see is people parking out in these areas and walking into the facility if there are off-site facilities, or if we talk about shuttle facility. So the applicant and the city is really faced with the issue in terms of how you work with the community or work with the parking demand so that, A, this doesn't become the parking of choice if it's first come, first served, and B, is that they're not out in the neighborhoods themselves, because that's easier than essentially waiting for a shuttle bus or looking for off-site parking that's, you know, that's away from the facility itself.
Dennis, has, has any study been done of existing parking in those, on the streets and the public facility?
Not to our knowledge. Did you say that there wasn't? I just said not to our knowledge, and it wasn't submitted?
One was not submitted.
What was submitted is, is some discussions in terms of the parking as it relates to other kinds, other uses, particularly the YMCA and their availability of parking. But this is a fairly unique facility. It's not the Y, it's not others, and a parking demand analysis would seem to be appropriate here to establish, A, does the city zoning statute make sense in terms of 54 spaces? And B, if there is a parking demand, what is it? And how does, and how do we, how do we meet it, even if we have to meet it off-site?
Mr. Boggs, did you have a question?
Well, it really, I know the area, but other than residential parking and the side street parking, there's no, there's no public parking on the Beale side. Is that correct?
Up in this area? On the street is, on the street in my mind is public park.
Yeah, but I meant like I thought, is there a parking lot over there anywhere, right?
Yeah, not, not, not to my knowledge, but there are other uses in there that have significant parking spaces available to them. The churches up the street would be one of the examples I would use. Up on the corner, up there, there's some church facilities up in there. So there are places where there are parking available, where there's parking available. The question is, is it, can it be utilized here? And will it be utilized, even if it was available?
Plus it's a three, four block walk.
Yeah, but that's not unusual. I mean, I gotta tell you, you know, go down, go down there on, on special event days, and there's people parking all over, making, making that walk, so.
So that's what, so if they park down on the waterfront parking lot there, is there a walkway to get up?
Yeah, that's Company Hill Path, and I showed you that. That's that area where, that you saw, this is the blue stone area in another picture. Come up here and in here. And then in that door there, that brings you into this area here, which is the tea room. I would call it a bar tea room. And then you can go upstairs or elevators to access the rest of the building.
Now, is this a, a not-for-profit organization?
Robert, do you have, I can ask the applicant. I mean, I assume it is. It's a cultural center, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's also, there's also parking on Broadway within four, eight feet of the building.
Yeah, yeah, there's parking out through here. There's, there's a lot of other places that you can park. They're just not under the control of the applicant.
Okay. Are there any more questions about parking? If not, then let's move on to this pointer.
It got answered, thank you.
Okay.
Just relating to parking generation related to circulation, you've got two curb cuts. In a pedestrian oriented environment like the waterfront, is there a need for two curb cuts?
There is.
I understand for the service delivery on the, I guess it's the south part of the building, but I do wonder about two curbs.
I, I hear what you're saying, but for me, this is a drop-off area. So they're moving, they're looking at this because of the constrictions on the site, they're looking at this is in and dropped off here. But let's talk about, if I may, let's talk about access, because, well, let's talk about parking. The first thing I think the recommendation here is to understand better the parking demands on, on, from the, from the facility, and that would be a parking demand analysis. And then the response would be is, is if that parking demand analysis shows that 54 are needed, that's fine. If it shows more than that, to try to establish a number of parking. I get the fact that the applicant may want to say that, well, 54 is a requirement under the, under the zoning statute, but the short answer, my short answer to that is, is that that didn't assume a lot of the uses. We don't know, and that's another comment, we don't know when the...
Finally you touch on the definition.
Yeah, we didn't know what the definition of cultural center was, and as we moved to define this, I think that the city would do well to take a look at the parking demand analysis. And then once that demand is established, to begin to start to say, well, how, how can it be met? But waiving this at this particular point in time requires a little bit more effort from the city in terms of, in terms of making sure that, that it can be met somewhere or how it's going to be met. And the biggest concern, I think, should be the impact on the residential neighborhoods up through here and the on-street parking associated with that as it relates to any proposal to do shuttle buses or something of that nature.
So Dennis, what you're trying to say is, is the balance of the spaces should be designated for events?
I'm not suggesting that. I'm just suggesting that, I'm just suggesting that we need to understand parking. We need to understand what the applicant's proposing beyond the waiver that we're currently aware of.
Okay.
Has the applicant supplied a supplemental parking plan?
No. Not to us. They may have provided the city. We don't have.
Please, sir, it's not a public discussion.
We don't have. I mean, they may have, but we don't have.
Dennis, you're talking about that being a drop-off zone there? They need to look at the turning radius.
That's, that's the other question that we wanted to ask, and I want to talk about that briefly in terms of access. Part of the access questions that we want to raise are access related to pedestrian access. I know that Company Hill Path, for those folks who've walked it, are not the best, is not the best walk up through here. The real question is, is that, you heard the applicant indicate that there's no improvements. We asked this question from the city as well. They've indicated that no improvements were proposed at Company Hill Path. Likelihood with the parking area that's down here, the amount of traffic that comes up of Company Hill Path, that there's an opportunity with this particular proposal to improve this section of Company Hill Path up to this area. Just so everyone understands, off-site impacts can be required. They're part of the secret process. You can certainly have that discussion relative to the need for off-site impacts here relative to that. The other thing here is, is that we really don't have any, we haven't established any pedestrian access to this, but from the front of this, from the sidewalk into this building at all, you're walking through parking lots. If this becomes an area where there's traffic circulation for drop-offs, if we're looking at bus, bus, or shuttle bus facilities using this area, there may need to be some discussion. We want to raise this with the city of how do pedestrians using this facility to get in the front door or the back door, hard to say which is which, get in here without, without essentially running into a whole lot of traffic moving through this facility doing drop-offs, doing drop-offs.
Dennis.
Sorry?
I want to add one more.
Sure.
Where do you put the snow?
Well, the snow in these kinds of facilities, you can ask that question for a lot of uses. Generally, what ends up happening is, is they, they move it off the site. And that's what they have to do. They have to move it off the site.
But I think that has to be part of the comment going back.
I am.
Because they could shove it into an area and take away two or three parking spaces.
Especially since Company Hill Path is, is a gravel walkway right now. It's not readily clean with a snow blower.
It's gravel? That's good.
What's the proximity of the car, the parking lot there to the front of the building?
This distance here?
The last car closes to the building.
Somewhere in the neighborhood. If you look at this distance, that's 12 feet. So if you look at that distance, it's between 10 and 12 feet, you know? It's tight.
It's too narrow there if you, you can't get a fire truck through there, let alone ladder truck through there, Dennis.
Well, our, our, our comment is, is that the city of Kingston Fire Company needs to be, needs to be, I mean, there are a lot of buildings in the city of Kingston you can't get fire trucks next to.
Well, this is new construction here, so this is a little different.
But they just need to be able to sign off on it. I don't want to design the building or indicate to, to those individuals that essentially the fire, the fire issues are one that the city fire company, the city fire folks need to sign off on. And that's, that's a comment about.
Mr. Wilbur?
Who owns the retaining wall on Company Hill?
I don't, I would presume the city, but I don't know.
So.
Do you folks own it?
The property owner.
Property owner owns it. Okay.
Dennis, if shuttle buses are going to be utilized, it needs to be accounted for to be able to get in and access.
Well, you start to think about...
Because they can't drop off on the city street.
Well, you actually start to think about using some of these areas out here. You actually start to think about a pull-off area in through here. And we've, we've had some discussions with respect, is some parking allowed on Beale Street now? But you actually start to think about some redesign here where you actually start to provide a drop-off area for the shuttle buses in this area. You bend this around. We've seen this done in the past. You bend this around, and you provide a drop-off area in it. And that also perhaps provides also drop-off areas, because one of the things you don't want to have happen is double parking out here with respect to delivery vehicles. So there's a real...
There's no way they can double park.
Yeah, there's real, some real concerns about that. So that's the other comment here, is what about delivery? They, they, this is an area that they're proposing for deliveries here. That's about 12 feet. You know, that's really, that's really tight, and one would suspect that a lot of your delivery vehicles are going to be in your parking area or out on the street here, double parked. So you want to think about that, and we're going to ask the city planning board to think about, to think about those issues.
Dennis also...
But overall access issues are pedestrians through both the front door and the back door. Bus, bus access through here, delivery vehicle access. And then last but not least is, is since we don't know what the traffic is going to be generating, we don't know where it's going. If we start running a lot of buses and traffic out here, this intersection with Broadway is not the best. There's really not a lot of refuge space in here. You have to clear both lanes. Anybody, it's a boulevard type access to Broadway out here. You have to clear both lanes. The idea would be to take a look at that and understand what that traffic needs to, to Broadway at that, at that location.
Dennis, how many of those parking spaces are handicap?
These over here are, is my understanding. I think there's two or three. I just don't know.
I would question if that's...
You only need one per 18, right?
Two. Yeah.
Well, I would question the number based on the, you know, 175 person theater.
And, you know, I, all I have to say is that...
It's 54 spots.
The, the number of parking spaces versus the uses inside are not a good match.
Okay. But, but even, even if it's 54 spots, there should be three.
I, you know, there's not 54, there's only 18.
Under the code for...
There's only 18. I don't want to, I don't want to get down and start designing this down at that level. I'm trying to stay up at this level, folks. I'm not trying to get down to the number of, of handicap parking spaces. I think you have bigger issues here than that.
No, but I think it should be, should be raised that somebody, so somebody looks at it.
Okay.
If you're advising the transportation demand in terms of parking, should you also recommend like a transportation demand management type analysis where the...
Part of that has to do with... Understand, understand that there's a generic impact statement out here that indicates that if you generate less than 100 trips on a, 100 trips per hour, that you're within, you're within the requirement with respect to being consistent with the generic impact statement. It's difficult for me to think that we're going to generate more than 100 trips per hour.
That's an awful lot of buses.
That's what I'm saying. So anyway, from an access standpoint, we have all of those issues that I just, I just talked about. And then we have bicycle racks down here.
Oh, yeah, the trucks are going to love that.
So we, we need to think about, if we're going to, if we're going to put bicycle racks in here, we need to think about where they, where they make more sense than back here where, where the garbage disposals are, where the garbage is. And I, and we just bring that out, and this is all on access, all right? It's all on access discussion that these bicycles need, need either A to be somewhat more visible and, and utilizable, if I, if that's a, if that's a term, than, than back in here. So that's, that's, that's my comments on access. Any questions on access?
Just, just Beale, is it parking both sides of the street at this time?
No. No. My, my understanding from talking to the city, and, and we, we'll check this out, but that there is some parking down in this area along, along Beale Street. One would presume that this, this kind of stuff will end up, because of the width here of Beale Street, that we're going to have some issues with respect to parking on Beale Street.
How many, what's the, the issues?
Well, I'm trying to stay with access, Tom.
All right, all right.
Trying to stay with access, because otherwise we'll be talking back and forth with each other. I'm just trying to stay with that.
It's not an access issue.
Pedestrian and company.
Well, the pedestrian access I talked about with respect to...
And the improvements to Company Hill.
Right, and that's, that's the point with respect to Company Hill Path, and we did, we did touch on that, that we thought that there, that if this is going to be an entranceway, then, and the applicant's talking about doing work on the wall here, that the city should take a look under its power to do off-site improvements and ask for off-site improvements up to this area to access, to access the...
Is that in your required application narrative?
It would be. It would be. Yes, it would be. Okay?
You want to move on to the next?
All right, I want to move on to the next, on the next issue. Rob, if you can go back. No, just the site plan. Where you work, if I may.
There it is. It's a little slow.
No, that, no. Back to the site plan.
Oh, okay.
There you go. Thank you. Of some concern is adjacencies here. We have some adjacencies with respect to this house. We have an adjacency with regard to this house. The concern with regard to adjacencies, from my mind, is this adjacency doesn't work that, is not that difficult because of the stair tower that's in here. This adjacency caused to me some issues. And we're, there are some proposals for some fencing in here. I think there's six-foot-high stockade fencing. The adjacency here is somewhat troubling mainly because it's a delivery area and an access area, and it's a garbage area. And that location adjacent to that house is of some concern. We did take a look to see whether or not we could move it out and start to think about, you know, utilizing this area out here to try to move some of these, to try to move some of the movements out, out from this area. But back to the city, the concern here is, there's going to be, at nighttime, there's going to be a lot of noise associated with this, and there may be some discussion with the city about where the, where the locations are to move this out. And at the minimum, one of the things that could be thought about is a sound wall in here rather than a six-foot-high stockade fence in this location.
What's the setbacks in the code?
Setbacks in the code are zero or six feet. They propose, this, this location I think is 12 feet or more. And this location on this side is six feet. And one of the reasons, because we thought about perhaps moving the building north side. One of the reasons that that, that is of some concern is the ability to maintain the building if you, if you cut it closer and any closer, just on the north side.
Dennis, you got a question here?
Sure.
Setbacks aside, what about fire separation between buildings? The new building is very tall, 30, 35 feet maybe.
It goes back to that, that comment that we're going to make with respect to the Kingston Fire folks. It needs code. I mean, we have buildings... I mean, we have buildings, you know, four-story buildings in the City of Kingston that are wall-to-wall.
But they may not be, they may be existing.
They're existing.
But it does go back to, it does go back to, that's why you have these six-foot sections in here. Building is sprinkler. It's going to have to be sprinkled. The fire company is going to have to be...
And the type of construction on that wall has to be non-combustible.
Yeah.
Which also makes it look very commercial sometimes.
Okay. Any, any questions with regard to adjacencies?
Dennis, is that next door property is owned the same as...
Yes. Say that again, Robert?
RT, they're all RTs.
They're all RTs.
I just was asking if there was a break in, a change in zoning.
Thank you.
Where is the house at the top of the site plan, the other neighbor?
I don't have a good sense of that and I'll be, and I don't know, it's not as close. We can go back to the aerial. Bert? It's further away as I recall. So yes, you can see it's quite, you know, this is the side.
So it's not missing from the plan, it's just not in that view.
Yeah, just not in that view. That's probably why it's there because it's further away. Okay?
What's across, across Abiel Street there?
On the other side of the vacant lot, the applicant, I believe...
It's elevated.
Yeah, and the applicant...
That's it?
Yeah.
It's elevated. It's not, it's not streetside.
The applicant had proposed at one point in time for parking. I, I presume it may still be under the applicant's control of some, of some nature. Okay? Next? Uh, thank you. Keep going, Rob. Bert? No issues here? Keep going? Uh, okay. One of the things we wanted, we wanted to touch on is the State Historic Preservation Officer. I haven't seen the second letter. The first letter suggests some concern relative to the, the building itself, the design of the building itself, particularly with respect to the quote industrial use of the building. If they've changed that, I don't want, I don't want to second guess what the State Historic Preservation Officer has to say nor the City of Kingston Historic Preservation District. One of the things I think we should say back is, is that regardless of that, whatever happens to this glazed area in these areas here, these are effectively storefronts, what they call storefronts from an architectural standpoint, is critically important. And what that means is, is that the details of this relative to how that glazed area is treated, what, whether they're going to use tinted glass, non-tinted glass, whether they're going to use bronzed aluminum, not bronzed aluminum, whether they're going to use it as a setback, what the lintels are. This is in pretty stark contrast to what's immediately down the street with it. We would call to the attention of the city that they have to pay some attention to these architectural details with respect to this much glass being available, looking, looking right at, right at the, right at the rundown. A couple of things, why, why this is there is, is that there is a great deal of, there's some, I shouldn't say a great deal. There appears to be some benefit from building orientation with respect to this as it relates to the southern exposure, which is why you have these solar panels up here. But we also want to understand what this is going to mean with respect to what it looks like at night, what the lighting is and how this is lit. And we're going to ask the city to take a little harder look at, at what, at why this, all this glass is here and if it does remain, that they have some understanding about the details of that glass and that they get sign off from the appropriate review agencies, the appropriate historic review agencies. With regard to lighting, we do not have lighting details for the on-building. So we want to ask the city to essentially, that they should have some details with respect to the on-building, on-building lighting. Part of that has to do with the fact is we have a lot of open space out here. Outdoor space, I shouldn't say open space, outdoor space that is available from the building itself to come out of these balconies. We just want to know how they're going to treat them. They could be lighted from above. We just don't know. At this time, they could be lighted from wall sconces, well, they could be lighted with wall packs. We just don't have that kind of detail. So that type of detail needs to get worked out as does this detail for lighting as we come up here and, and move, and move into this, move into this area to access the roadway. We do have the lighting details, right, Robert? We do have the lighting details for the parking.
You do have for parking? Okay.
You don't have anything? We just want to make a comment, make sure that they're a full cut off.
You're correct. It would be on-building lighting and all that lighting, that lighting detail, right?
Are there architectural guidelines for this district?
Yes.
Yes.
And has that been reviewed against?
They're being reviewed now by the Historic Preservation, the Landmarks Commission. City Landmarks Commission would review. I don't want to try to second guess the Landmarks Commission or the, or the State Historic Preservation Office.
Dennis said pathway. Is that, someone said that was gravel? Is someone going to pave it or something?
It's pretty rough. A, I'm not sure, I don't know what the treatment would be, but improvements would be, it could use some drainage work. It could use some improvements. The idea being is, is that to, the city to sort of look at this and say, well, this becomes a major access point for pedestrians up to this facility. Let's see if we, if the facility can, what we can do with this, with this facility, with this path, with the, using, using some of the facility's expertise and quite frankly catch with regard to that. I don't believe that we're going to be able to meet ADA. I think that the grade is deeper than, than ADA, ADA requirements. And I wouldn't suggest that they start...
But they can get in the front, so...
Yeah, yeah. And I'm not suggesting that they, they try to make this ADA compliant. And I'm not suggesting that, I wouldn't suggest that it be paved. I think that would create some more issues with respect to stormwater, et cetera. But there are other treatments that may be available to them.
Permian bookpakers?
Yeah, permium pavers, there's other kinds of things.
But the city would have to be on board with that, right?
Yeah, the city, yeah, the city, yeah. I mean, I know why the city wouldn't be, to be honest with you, but that's beside the point. Anything else on access? Anything else on lighting? Anything else on? I didn't touch on landscaping. The landscaping here is minimal. There's not a lot of space on the, on the property to do landscaping.
The bluestone on the surfaces and the landscaping in terms of accessways and whatnot seems like it would be really reflective of the rundown's history.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, marquee, plans for marquee for the theater?
Goes into general, general discussion with respect to signage, what we're proposing, what's being, what we're showing. And to the best of my knowledge, the only details we have are the on-building signage as shown. I don't know whether this is going to be walk-up and you figure out what's going to go on. There's going to be temporary signage out front. There's going to be other kinds of signage. We just don't know at this particular time. So signage comment is, is within, is within the reason.
Dennis, is it the Heritage Commission as well that looks at this as well as their, what is it, their landmarks or historic?
Landmarks.
Landmarks. I mean, because when you, when you really look at this building, it doesn't fit in with the character of the neighborhood.
Well, we're going to...
So I hope that they, you know, we, we put that in our comment that they take a good, serious look at this as well as the size.
It's mass and scale.
Yeah, it doesn't fit in.
We get it, we get it. I can't answer your question with respect to whether the Heritage Commission looks at this or doesn't. We know that the Landmarks Commission does. Anything else on, on that? Okay, next. This, this gives you a showing here. One of the questions that was raised tonight by one of the public commoners was blasting. It's not clear, there's, there's not a lot of borings done on the site, I think. But it does, it's clear that as you move north on the site, rock rises to the surface. And it's also clear that as you move to the center of the site, that there's about 10 feet of overburden before you hit rock. But I think the blasting comment should be made because the main thing is, is A, do, community should know whether there's going to be blasting. It shouldn't, we shouldn't have to guess at it. And B is if it is, if it is going to be done, then the question is, is that the neighbor should be notified. There should be a blasting protocol established relative to that.
There's water mains in the street, the public utilities?
Yeah, there's water mains up, yeah, there has to be.
Right.
The whole area is surrounded by old buildings. The blasting is going to be more detrimental to the building.
Could not be blasted.
You can replace a pipe.
Yeah, I, you know, before we say there shouldn't be blasting, I, I just don't know what that rock is, whether you can move it with, how you can move that rocker, what's the better way to move that rock? So I don't want to preclude blasting.
If you remember a couple summers ago, the guy across the creek chewed on it with a rock hammer all summer long.
Yeah.
And it's probably the same kind of rock on this side of the creek.
Don't know, but I, I take what you're saying. I take what you're saying. All right, let's, can we move on? I just wanted, so a couple of things, one of the things that comes out with respect to, with respect to Seeker is this determination with respect to community character. It's a requirement under Seeker to make a finding with respect to that. We want to make a comment that the city essentially needs to take a higher, a close look with regard to that. And also with respect to the comments relative to the historic preservation folks that are, that are currently under the review, whether it be at the local level or at the state level. The parking stuff we discussed relative to that, the delivery discussed, we discussed. I'm sorry, the adjacencies we discussed, the access point we discussed, the lighting we discussed. So the only thing that leaves us here is with definition. Cultural centers are not defined in the city statute. They're allowed but not defined. A couple of things happened with respect to that and we've heard some discussions tonight about the uses that are being proposed in the facility. So absent a definition, the real question that becomes is, is that how does the city essentially work itself towards what constitutes a cultural center? It may not be, it may be longer term than this particular application. It may be, it may be other types of things that the city talks about with respect to cultural center. I think the point being is, is that we shouldn't let applicants define what constitutes a cultural center. The city should move to define its own with respect to cultural center. And one of the things that we've looked at, we've gone and gone and taken a look at some definitions of cultural centers. And of some concern, I think, with respect to the proposed uses, is what constitutes an accessory use to the, to cultural center. Some of the concerns I think we have, we have relative to this is the amount of space that may be, may or may not be devoted to the sale of alcohol. You've heard some of that discussion tonight. That's okay. I mean, you've seen that in, for example, if you go in U-PAC, there is a place in U-PAC that you can go and get something to eat, get tea, get a, get a drink if you need to, or something of that nature. But you can't walk into U-PAC and have a cocktail. There has to be an event going on. So one of the things we want to talk about to the city is to say that if it is a cultural center and you're having this discussion, you ought to have a discussion of how accessory uses can be treated within the center when they serve the purpose of the cultural center versus they serve a general purpose, which may be or may not be within the, within the cultural center's definition. That said, there may actually be, in this particular area, there may actually be, all the uses that are in the cultural center may actually be permitted uses in the district. But we want to raise this as an advisory comment to the city to go back and take a look at, at what they consider cultural uses and how that relates to other uses which are accessory to cultural uses but should not become a principal use or not permitted when there's not a cultural activity on there.
The other thing, Dennis, is they could put it in the comprehensive plan.
There are things that, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to say that, I think the applicant is on, you know, I think the applicant can begin, begin to say that, you know, absent a definition, you know, the, you know, the, the, the language here clearly says that I, I can define myself as a cultural use and do I need that? I'm a nonprofit, particularly generated to the heritage of the, the uses that are in here. So you can start to see how they work themselves through that. The real question is, is how do you hold them accountable for other types of uses that may be in the facility in terms of, in terms of how they're used?
Make a motion to support staff?
Yeah. Is there any other questions?
I just can make a, just four items, just, just to make sure that they're part of the required modifications for our discussion.
Fire, the fire, the signage.
Department sign off.
Yeah, yeah.
The marquee and the signage, the question of excavation, blasting and the impact on Broadway, the intersection, the boulevard and stuff.
All part of that.
Dennis, a question. Does, does the zoning code deal with, well, two things. One is how multiple principal uses are addressed on one property? Do we know?
I, I don't know, but what I would say to you is, is that cultural centers would have multiple uses associated with it.
No, but I'm just, I'm just asking in general.
Space, space, there's, you know, there's...
Right, but I'm not talking about a cultural center. I'm just talking if somebody applied for multiple uses.
There is a mixed-use zone in the city that allows this. I just don't know down here. There are a number of mixed uses with, if I give you the example just below here, we have residential uses and commercial uses in the same building.
And then the second question is, does, does the code define, I lost my train of thought, I'm sorry, how, how uses that aren't defined are addressed?
No.
Because some codes say...
Let me say that, let me say that a little bit less forcefully. I don't think so.
Because some codes are very clear. If it's not defined, it's not allowed, or if it's not defined, this happens.
I, I don't think anyone's arguing that it's not a cultural center. I think the question is, is how do you treat all of the uses in the, in the building relative to their, well, to tie them back to make sure that they're culturally relevant? And I, that's what I would, that's what I would say.
And, and should they consider referring it to the ZEALN Board of Appeals to define cultural center?
Uh... Yeah, no, no one has suggested from the zoning enforcement officer down, on down that it doesn't need the definition of a cultural center.
Yeah, they've already been through this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that was...
One of the other things, the last thing here, which is not on here, and thank you Bert for reminding me, is that if the city has not reached a determination with respect to Seeker and it continues to gather information before it makes its Seeker determination, that means it should come back here because on a full statement, on a full statement issue.
Dennis, one more thing.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Okay, oh, sorry.
Is this going to be a seven-day-a-week operation?
There's, we haven't seen any proposals for its, its operation. I would suspect that it would be open at least, at least that. I don't see why not, let's put it that way. And there would be no restrictions for it not to be open seven days a week.
I mean, every other establishment, there's open hours.
Question on adjacencies. So you focused on the adjacencies at the ground plane. I see that there are balconies facing the waterfront. Is there, is there a rooftop use? Is that an adjacent that you're also going to be addressing?
Um, the use, the rooftop use, the pass on the rooftop, do we have the rooftop site plan or not? Did we bring that in?
Yeah, I have a question for them.
If it's there, let's go, do we have the rooftop? I don't think we do.
No.
All right, we don't. I think the pass on the rooftop, the way they're designed, that the green areas associate the rooftop, but the only place that you can really look out is to the north or to the south, across, across the water.
Across the water.
Because of the way the green roof is situated. But we certainly can, I, I take your, with the comment with respect to the adjoining yard. Okay.
Okay, are there any other questions? If not, we've got a motion and a second.
Make a motion if you can.
Paul made the motion. Mark Watkins made the second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Mr. Markowitz is opposed. Any abstentions? Okay, we have, we have enough, right? Okay. 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 Thank you, everybody. Our next application. Town of Marble Town. Are there any recusals?
All right. Town of Marble Town, it's a proposal just to reorganize their existing design guidelines with respect to their business zones. It's not substantive changes. It's just the way they're organizing it.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. New Paltz Village, are there any recusals?
Yep.
New Paltz, uh, Village?
I can step in if you need a...
Does that work?
No.
If you have a recusal?
No, if he's here, if he's here, he's got to read here. We, we have...
Can't alternate votes. Okay, so this is the apartment complex we reviewed last month. And it's backed for two different variances. One is for driveway width.
That's, that's probably going to come off the table. They modified the driveway width to be a court.
Okay, so then it's only the height. It's 30 feet in the zone, 35 in the front door. Keep in mind, it's adjacent immediately across the street from City of New Paltz. So move, any impact with respect to that.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Town of Platahill, any recusals?
Me.
All right, so code, this is a proposed 110-foot wireless tower, which is a four-foot antenna on top of that. Got alternative. The applicant has actually specifically proposed a, to choose the alternative that is the lowest, that requires them to build 110 feet, which is about... which is about, just above tree line. Alternatives, let's see, go to the next slide. So, oh, that's the, you can keep it where it was, if you need to, go back. Oh, that's the Orange County boundary.
Well, let's let him say it first, in case it's on stage.
Orange County bounty, go to the next one.
No county impact, Rob? There we go.
So move.
You don't want to know anything about it.
Who waits a second?
Second.
Way up there.
That is red staff, right?
I have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
We have a question.
One question. Does that have to go to the county?
You notify to Orange County? Yes, yes, and they did. That's all.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Can't see it.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained. And that was for both, Rob?
Yeah.
Okay, Town of Rosendale, are there any recusals? Space of Stillness.
Space of Stillness, this is in High Falls, this is 213 here, this is the site that loops around here. What we're proposing is a use variance for equine therapy. It's not allowed use in the zone, but it has a lot of support from the neighbors. They're going to have three to five horses on site that are viewed, neglected, rescued animals. So rather, while they haven't provided any information, it's not for profit too, I should say, but they haven't provided any information that would support a use variance, it's not really any county impact either. Make an advisory comment that they talked to the town board about maybe getting a zoning amendment for a site, they haven't purchased the site.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained. And Mr. Conyers.
Sort of missing, yeah.
Town of Sogardes, are there any recusals?
Paul.
Have your chance, will you?
Yeah, being on self-storage, no, it's not self-storage, it's storage. Excuse me. This is up in Quarryville, so it's near Green County, going on 32 Green County, so it's located here. You have an existing landscape supply, not a landscape, landscape tree service in there, and what they do is they have their vehicles stored outside currently, so proposing a 5,000-square-foot steel building to store them all inside, they're going to do landscaping up front, go to site plan. That's a building or a sample building, so you can landscape it, they have existing access onto the state route. No county impact. Second.
I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Town of Shandaken, are there any recusals?
This is one of those, if the Town of Shandaken had signed our extension agreement, we would not be seeing a 18-feet side yard variance.
So move. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussions? All in favor? Aye.